Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the April 30th, uh, pushing ahead, April 20th, 2017, Planning Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Strong.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are on to Agenda Item 3, Public Statements. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on a matter not on the Consent Calendar Public Hearings portion of the agenda. If you're here on Item 5A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission on a matter not on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing portion of the agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing. No, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Um, yes, Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing item for separate consideration? Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing items?
I move.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Strong. Is there a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items, Agenda Item Number 5. The purpose of this section is to vote on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items without further comments. There's only one item this evening unless the item is removed by the commission or someone in the audience who wishes to speak on that item. If anyone wishes to speak on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing item, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. At this time, I will open the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, does any commissioner wish to remove this item? No. At this time, the public hearing on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing item is now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing item, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll move to adopt.
Thank you. Commissioner Strong, you want to second that one, too?
I'll do that.
Thank you. Again, a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. We will move past Agenda Item Number 6. We do not have any public hearing items this evening. We move on to New Business, Agenda Item 7. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Chairman Lomas. Tonight, I would like to introduce Hayward Cox. He is our newest promotion into supervising position at the Planning Division at Community Development, and he is the Community Development Coordinator. He replaces Ryan Bland, who was with the city for many years, and he oversees the housing and HUD allocations, and that includes CDBG funds, home funds, and other items. And he's here tonight to present the Annual Action Plan. This is a workshop, just kind of an FYI, an opportunity for the public to comment. It was advertised, and an opportunity for your Planning Commission to learn a little bit about what Hayward and his group do.
Thank you. Good evening, and I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity to give this informational presentation to the commission. For a number of years, the City of Bakersfield has received and used HUD funds to improve our community. And the HUD's mission is to create a strong and sustainable, inclusive communities and quality affordable housing for everyone. City of Bakersfield is an entitlement community, and according to the regulations, you have to be a community of 50,000 people or more, or a county of more than 200,000 people. You know, when you're an entitlement community, we can receive the funds, CDBG funds, home, ESG, and HOPWA. Those stand for Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS. In order to receive these funds from HUD, the city is required to develop a five-year consolidated plan, and this consists of a needs assessment, a strategy, strategic plan, an action plan, and eventually, an annual performance plan, planning report. The, the applications that we have received, they were received on the 31st of October of 2016, and the, our staff evaluated all the applications, and then we had the budget finance take a look at those and make recommendations for these projects. And right now, we're in the third year of our action plan, and the action plan is telling HUD how we're going to use the money, the funds that are become available to us. Get on the proper slide here, and we just back up one. I think I got a little bit ahead of myself. All right, we're at the five-year action plan. There we go. Okay, so the Annual Action Plan, CDBG funds, we are, the budget finance has recommended $3.2 million for the CDBG, home, $1.0 million, $287,000 for ESG, $384 for the HOPWA programs. And again, the milestones that we had to go through, we've had a deadline of October 31 to receive applications. Budget Finance Committee made recommendations on, at their meeting on March 2nd. And at this time, we're in our 30-day public notice period. That period ends, it started on April 7th, it ends on the 10th of May. We then will have action plan meetings, public hearing on the 25th of, of April, and then we have a deadline of submitting this action plan, if the council approves it, on April, on May 15th. Thank you. And the available funds. CDBG entitlement using the, what we think HUD is going to give us, these are just estimates at this point, and a projected program income, our total available resources will be $3.2 million for CDBG. And we, just a breakdown of how these funds are going to be used, administration, it's a 20% admin, and then we also have loans from, that we've borrowed from previous CDBG allocations, or actually from future CDBG allocations, and it was called Section 108. And we have loan repayments of $282,692, and that's for the Aquatic Center and some of the other swimming pool projects for parks, and also $800,000 loan, but a $53,244 payment, annual payment, and that was for southeast Bakersfield infrastructure projects, curb, gutter, sidewalk, those kinds of things. And these fixed allocations, again, the, we have the administration funds, $100,000 of going to our fair housing program. We, right now, are under contract with GBLA to provide fair housing services to the city in the Section 108 loans that I spoke of earlier. And those loans, the, those loans went to provide curb, gutter, sidewalk, and also the Aquatic Center. The proposed projects for the year, again, $100,000 for fair housing programs. Bakersfield Senior Center, which is one of the nonprofits that we support annually, will receive $85,000. The Bakersfield Police Department, for their community policing programs, will receive, will receive $302,982, and from our public services sector. And then the public improvement projects, homeless accessibility for disabled people, removing architectural barriers in their homes, a $40,000 allocation, and then curb, gutter, sidewalk projects, Union Brundage Area, Baker Street, Old Town Kern, La France, Oleander, those are the areas that will receive curb, gutter, sidewalk funding. And the Stern Park and Lowell Park will receive ADA improvements in shade structures. And the total funding there is, for public improvements, is $1,784,254. Unfortunately, there are, there are applications that did not receive or were not recommended for funding, and simply because we received about $15 million worth of requests, and we only receive about, totally about $5 million total project, total HUD entitlement for all of our programs. And here's just an overview of the, the projects, well, the project detail, Senior Center, $85,000 to support the programs that are done there, and then the Bakersfield Police Department to get more officers on the streets in some of the impacted areas, and you can see the map to your right that outlines where the, where these police officers will be patrolling. And curb, gutter, sidewalk, for Union Brundage, taking care of improper drainage, and putting in infrastructure for sidewalks and things like that in the Union Brundage, Old Town Kern, La France, and the Oleander area. Again, for Union Brundage, we're proposing $600,815 for Phase 4, and that would be in Ward 1. And Baker Street, Old Town Kern, about $300,000 is being proposed for that, and it's in Ward 2. La France, El Toro, $272,229, and Oleander area, $300,000. And all of these areas, except for the Old Town Kern area, I believe, were continuations. We're trying to finish, finish projects that have previously been started. The playground structures, you know, Bakersfield, sun and heat pretty bad, and so it's good to have a shade structure around, and so Stern Park will be receiving that, and also some ADA improvements to allow people with disabilities to get to the park, get to the equipment. And also for Lowell Park, the same thing, ADA improvements for disabled people and also shade structures. The Home Investment Partnership Program provides affordable housing for low-income people, and that resource allows us to do projects like the one in this slide, Mill Creek Courtyard, which has 62 units. And just recently, we had a ribbon cutting for the Mill Creek Village Project, which is 63 affordable units for seniors. And so, we have not designated projects yet to approve, but we have in this, in this, within this funding, new construction assistance, $837,000 for a project that will come along, and also CHODO or Community Housing Development Organizations. We are mandated to set aside 15% of the home allocation for, for those types of projects. So our total proposed is $1,117,081. The Emergency Solutions Grant is a program to, to help not just end homelessness, but to address homelessness problems in our community. And there are several organizations that receive the funding, Flood Ministries for Street Outreach, Bakersfield Homeless Center, the Homeless Shelter, the Bakersfield Rescue Mission, another homeless shelter, Alliance Against Family Violence, they have, they do shelter and outreach. And also, Bakersfield Homeless Center does something they call Rapid Re-Housing, which helps prevent homelessness for people who have just lost their housing, and perhaps we can, they can get them housed a little more quickly so they don't have to go out on the street. And this map shows the different areas where these organizations are, the Flood Ministries, the Alliance Against Family Violence, sorry, the Mission at Kern, and also the Bakersfield Homeless Center. And these are just their locations, but all of these agencies help people citywide. And then the housing opportunity for people, for persons with AIDS, HIV/AIDS. Typically, that program is being administered by Kern County Public Health Department, and that is funds for rental assistance, for case management, and emergency rental assistance for people with HIV/AIDS. People with HIV/AIDS are deemed to be at risk for homelessness, and so this program goes a long way to address those issues. And as a recap, this is our, the allocations, our resources that we have, again, for fiscal year 17, 18, $3.2 million for CDBG, approximately $1 million for home, $287 for ESG, and $384 for HOPWA, which, so our total resources are about $5 million for this year. And they are slightly up from last year, which was $5 million also. This is just the proposed budget for our home program, and it shows what was requested, what's recommended, and then the budget from the previous year. And our budgets are pretty much static, they haven't changed much, and we hope they don't change much, but if you've heard some of the reports from Washington DC, we do stand a chance of losing funding, and we just, we just hope and pray that that doesn't happen. This is our proposed CDB, CDBG budget, and again, what was requested, and you can see on the left, at the left column, all of those people or projects or applications that were calling for funds, and the middle column shows of the projects that we were actually able to make recommendations for funding. And that is the presentation, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. You did a lot of work, very good presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Rudnick.
Hi, good evening, thank you. I've got a few questions. Your curb and gutter, how do you choose priorities? There's a lot of little pockets in the city that know, that need curb and gutter work, and is curb and gutter work our priority over curb and gutter and sidewalk? In other words, is curb and gutter our first priority, then you come back later and do sidewalk? What is the, you know, thought on that?
Hey, Chair and Commissioner Rudnick, we get our prioritization from our Public Works Department. They have their engineers and their teams that look at the different areas that need curb, gutter, sidewalk. Many times, these are areas that maybe were annexed into the city from the county, and they didn't have all the facilities that they, that were needed. Public Works does their assessment, and they, they send those requests to us ranked most important, and so that's the way we choose them.
So basically, you're more of an administration conduit than a picking and choosing? Am I saying that right?
Yes, as far as those Public Works projects, yes, sir. And then what happens is Budget Finance is making a recommendation, and of course, City Council makes the final decision.
Right. Also, I have some real property in downtown, I know others that do, too. At different times, there's been promotions about trees and other downtown facade improvements. Is that anywhere in the pipeline, or how does that, how is that looking these days?
All right, I will defer to my director here for that.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Rudnick. To elaborate a little on what Hayward said earlier with regard to the curb, gutter, and sidewalk, he provided a very thorough answer. The other component is that it has to be within a qualifying area, an income qualifying area, and those are limited predominantly in Bakersfield to the southeast and central parts of town, and those areas are dictated by the federal government, so that's where these funds can be allocated. And then, and to answer the other component of that question, yes, we do focus on sidewalk as well, all three at once, curb, gutter, and sidewalk, a complete package, that way we don't have to go back and revisit it again. And we would refer to the expertise of Public Works to tell us where this infrastructure is in the most need, and we go from there. And then, with regard to your other question, can you elaborate a little more?
Well, I, I was just asking out of more curiosity. At different times, there's been programs, I'm not sure if they were C, I'm going to say this incorrectly, CDBG, or whichever program they were tied into, but there were facade improvements or tree improvements in sidewalks, things like that, for downtown beautification, and I didn't know if that was still in the system somewhere, and if it's part of these programs, et cetera.
It's typically not within the scope of what CDBG funds can be used for. Those are more for permanent things, like the curb, gutter, sidewalk, trees, and other things like that would be funded through other programs. The Parks and Recs Department does maintain a lot of those medians, and then as a part of the visioning process that we are going through, that I discussed with you guys, I believe last month, we've identified other potential sources of revenue to fund those improvements. One of those would be a property-based improvement district, which is a P-Bid, and that's something that the local property owners in the downtown area will have an opportunity to vote on, and that would set aside additional funds for those types of improvements.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strong.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was wondering, like, on your, I see where the, under the 108 program, you sort of leveraged out, when you were doing redevelopment projects, et cetera, and finishing the downtown, and did a great job. When will some of that, that debt that's leveraged out on 108, when will it mature, and when will it go away? It's, what is it, $500,000 or so comes out of your, your budget to pay those 108 loans back? When does that, or do you, I mean, is that, is that coming to a sunset period shortly, or next three years, or next five years, or, I'm just curious when?
Hayward has all the specific details for each of the loans, but basically, they are all negotiated independently. I believe the term was 20 years for all of them, and so they're all about five to seven years in.
Oh, okay. The second thing I had, I, this, this is kind of a stupid question, I, you know, you read our world of CNN and national news, et cetera, et cetera, I'm hearing that our Attorney General is saying if you don't comply with certain rules and regulations, that you may stand a chance of losing some of your funding, federal funding. I, how does that impact the City of Bakersfield in terms of, of, we have a number of people who are, who are immigrants working here, and do we have any kind of, any new special compliance that they've, are they passing down from the feds with regards to making sure that we're in compliance with all the, all the regulations?
Yeah, I don't think there's been anything new with regard to that particular topic, but HUD does have very stringent regulatory guidelines, and that is what the admin cap is for, that you saw in that budget, that's for us to have staff to do the monitoring that comes with these funds, and we have very specific compliance and reporting requirements, which we do, and I'm happy to say that the City of Bakersfield is very efficient with the use of our funds. You can see every dollar is leveraged into a project that will make a significant difference, and Hayward has a great relationship with our partners over at HUD from DC and from the Los Angeles office, and we work with them very closely to make sure that we're in compliance.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Excellent questions, thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? No? Thank you, Hayward.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our, in New Business, we have the selection of Chair and Vice Chair for 2017, 2018. And at this time, I will look for a motion for Chairman. Commissioner Wade.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Schwartz as Chairman.
Who serves now as our Vice Chair, and unfortunately, he is not here this evening. He is at a, he's a camp counselor for some children, so I'm, I'm pretty, I'm sad that he's not here, but I fully support his nomination. Do we have any other nominations for Chair? No, do I have, do I take a second? May I have a second for Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Rudnick.
I'll second.
Thank you. And we will, roll call? Dana?
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. He'll be an excellent chairman. Now I look for a motion for a Vice Chair for 2017, 2018. Commissioner Strong.
I would nominate our current Chair, Commissioner Lomas.
Thank you, Commissioner Strong.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have, do, thank you. May I, yes, I'd be happy to. It's been an honor to serve, and I'm excited to, to continue to serve on this commission. So thank you for that. And this will be a roll call vote. I'm a little embarrassed. Hey, he's going to vote no, he said.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Strong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
That one hurt. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are on to Communications. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas, Chair, Vice Chair. First, I wanted to welcome Daniel Kater, our newest Commissioner. We've got lots of new faces, so welcome, we appreciate you volunteering your time, and promised to make it fun and interesting for the next four years. And I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Rudnick on being appointed to another full term. We have appreciated working with you for the last, I believe it's about two years, or a little less, and we look forward to you serving out a full term, so congratulations. It's very nice to see six commissioners up there. Thank you, appreciate it, and we look forward to an exciting year ahead.
Thank you. I'm on to Commissioner comments. Our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Kater.
Rookie mistake. Bob warned me about that, but I didn't, I didn't take heed. I just quickly want to extend a hello, a warm greeting to all the other commissioners. Look forward to working with you. I'd also like to thank City Council for allowing me to serve in this capacity, and And to City staff, your reception has been very warm, very kind, and I feel very welcome here. So I'm very excited about, our community is growing at a rate that we have not seen before. Maybe a little bit slower than pre-recession. But, and I'm excited for the opportunities and the challenges that that presents, and I'm glad to be able to take part in the dialogue. I'd also like to thank everyone that came to the meeting tonight. I think public comments and public participation make a stronger city. So thank you for having your presence, for taking the time out of your day to come. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your enthusiasm. So thank you. Welcome. Any other Commissioner comments? No? Then we are adjourned. Thank you, and good night.